I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Before we begin the meeting, I'd just like to make an announcement that if you would like to speak either at the public hearing or during citizens' comments, there are cards in the foyer that you need to fill out and provide to the clerk and then we can call your name. So please do that if you would like to speak. May I please have a motion to certify the closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters is lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law in that only such public matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Can I have a second?
Second.
We moved and seconded any discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2020-29 Capital Improvement Plan. I hereby open the public hearing and ask Ms. Hummel to please read the directions. Sorry, I need to get to that. Sorry. Oh, here it is. Sorry. Okay. Sorry. This is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The board is interested in hearing all comments fully and request that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening and we appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines. Madam Chair, my directions are concluded. Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Ombi?
Jay Iverson.
I'm Jay Iverson, 103 Branscombe Boulevard in Berkeley District, represented by Mrs. Young. I'm here today to talk about the $66.3 million proposed CIP for the next five years for an elementary school and a high school. First point I'd like to make is all the literature that you have out there, future think, et cetera. An elementary school is defined as kindergarten to fifth grade. Middle school is six through eight. High school is nine through 12. I'll come back to that later. When considering additional classroom capacity, there are two factors that go into that. One is the current capacity, and second is your enrollment projections. I will stipulate that I have no quarrel at all with the current capacity numbers presented by the central office. They're reasonable, and I assume they're accurate. I do have a problem with the projections. I have provided you some material. On number A, you will have the historical projections on elementary school, middle school, and high schools over the last five years. I can provide it all the way back to 2010 if you want. And when the future became present, every case, every case, they under-projected on the low enrollment the actual number of kids who showed up at the time in question. And for the last five years, the projections have been going down, not up. Now, specifically to the high schools, on the low enrollment projections and the current future think, the enrollment is projected to decline at the high school level for each of the next six years. And this is on the low enrollment projections. And the past has indicated that less kids show up than is projected. They're declining. They're not going up. And that's all verified in the material I gave you. Even with these high school projections, in 10 years, they're below the effective capacity of the high schools. And so I do not see how the $27 million, which is the difference between the elementary school and $66 million, $27 million can be at all justified to spend on any additional classroom space for the high schools. And on the elementary schools, for the first time ever, you will see that they've included on the page, it's there in part B, the enrollment projections include pre-K. Pre-K is jumping the numbers up. And even with that, 37 kids over the projections.
Thank you, Mr. Iverson.
The million dollars per kid in capital cost.
Thank you. Ms. Sersa, could we sound an alarm at the next? Thank you.
Doesn't do an alarm. Does it blink for that?
Thank you. Okay. There are no other speaker cards, so I close the public hearing. The next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask, thank you, sorry. The next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite Jamestown High School junior Jack DeVore up to lead us, please. Jack, thank you so much. Come to the microphone and lead us whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Jack. Ms. Sersa, will you take attendance, please?
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Kelly, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move for approval of the agenda with a slight modification to move 11.01 New Horizons Presentation on Educational Services to just after citizens' comments.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Okay. That brings us to announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron?
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm excited this evening to share with you two new ways for parents and families to receive important and helpful information about WJCC schools. Beginning December 12, families and staff will be able to sign up to receive text messages from the school division. We've heard from many people that text is the easiest way for them to receive notifications about school closures or other emergency messages. In response, we are happy to make this service available to families. Signing up is simple. Any cell phone number currently in our rabid notification system will be sent a text message on December 12. Recipients simply need to respond confirming that they wish to receive texts. Families who do not have a cell phone number on file will be emailed instructions for signing up. As you imagine, this will be a valuable communications tool during severe times of winter weather. And speaking of valuable resources, I want to let you know about a new Parent Academy resource for families. We know that in today's busy, overscheduled world, it can be challenging for parents to map out family activities or develop strategies that support their children's learning. Fortunately, the WJC Schools Parent Academy is here to help. Every day at noon, we post a Parent Academy eTip on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram with information about academic support, family conversation starters, or activities parents can try with their children. I'd like to encourage you to visit our social media pages to see a few of the eTips for yourself. One of my particular favorites suggested that elementary school children practice their writing skills by pretending to be the family reporter. The tip recommended that the child use his imagination and observation skills to report on neighborhood events of the day. Now, that is pretty creative. By the way, each Parent Academy eTip is available in both English and Spanish. Goal three of our strategic plan Elevate Beyond Excellence is to cultivate a culture of open and effective communication to inform and engage all stakeholders. Text messaging and Parent Academy eTips are two ways to do just that. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Anyone else? Okay. The next item on our agenda is student and staff recognitions. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have several individuals to recognize tonight. Let's begin by honoring Jamestown's golf team for being named VHSL Class Four Champions. The team shot a season-best 291 at Williamsburg National Golf Course to earn the title. Students, as your name is called, please join us up front to be recognized and remain for a group photograph. Dana Abrin. If the coach would come up and join us as well, please. Congratulations again. We also want to recognize Jay Blaine Blatton for being named a Purple Star School by the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact for Military Children. JBB Elementary is one of the first schools in Virginia to earn the honor for its efforts to support students from military families. During tonight's school spotlight, you will have a chance to hear more about the programs and resources that JBB Elementary School offers to help ease transitions for military families and to help them cope with unique challenges like deployments. Principal Amy Stam and the team have joined us up front to be recognized. Well done. Keep up the outstanding work. Madam Chair, those were all of the recognitions for this evening. We will have more recognitions at the regular meeting in January.
The next item on our agenda is school spotlight, and I think we're going to hear about Jay Blaine Blatton and the award they were just recognized for.
That's correct. Thank you, Ms. Cook. Tonight's school spotlight shines on Jay Blaine Blatton Elementary School. As you know, goal four of the division's strategic plan Elevate Beyond Excellence calls on all WJC staff to build a positive and inclusive culture that inspires all students to participate fully in their school experience. In part, that means identifying the unique needs of each child or group of children in our schools and working to meet those needs while also removing barriers to their engagement and success. The teachers and staff at JBB Elementary do a great job in that regard. As you just heard during our recognitions, the school was named a 2018 Purple Star School by the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact for Military Children for its work to support children from military families. This evening, we are proud to welcome the JBB principal, Dr. Amy Stam, and members of her team to share a few examples of their work. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Certainly, our students from military families face unique challenges. For example, research shows that students that are children of military families move six to nine times between kindergarten and graduation from high school. That means they are starting a new school, making new friends, forming new relationships with adults, about three times more than students of non-military peers. These constant changes can lead to social and emotional and academic challenges. At JBB, we have 65 students, which is about 15% of our population, that comes from at least one parent who is an active-duty member of the military. Our school counselor, our teachers, and all of our staff really do an amazing job of helping our students transition in and out of our school, ensuring that the children are placed in the appropriate classes and getting the appropriate remediation, academic support, and intervention and enrichment that they deserve. But as you can imagine, we need to focus on providing them with emotional support for these young people as well. Leading much of that work are our fabulous school counselor, Lynette Carpenter, our assistant principal, Sandy Van Leleveld, our CRT teacher, Jennifer Kimbrough, and they are all here with me tonight. As a team, we work with our staff to help new students make connections with their classmates and teachers. We have social clubs for military children along with special activities throughout the year, highlighting the importance of our military families, parents, and the sacrifices of both the service members and their families. We have a short video to share with you this evening that highlights some of those
Every year, we have a Military Social at JBB.
She gets tired of holding that smile.
Great place for Ms. Kimbrough to have her face stopped.
It's beautiful.
Every year, we have a Military Social at JBB. When it started four years ago, when I started here, having, being part of a military family, it was really important for me to share that experience with our kids so that our students, which is about 65 military students at JBB, so they know the connection of other military families within the school. Because when you're not around your family, you need that support.
I decided to volunteer for military kids because I myself was a military kid, actually. And having that foundation and friends and support, I think, is really great of what they're doing here at JBB.
In the spring, we'll hold a Purple Up Day. It's done nationwide. Everyone wears purple for support of our military students. And we usually get a group shot of at least the staff wearing purple, but all the students support it.
I think these purple things are really important because it shows that there's a big community that military children have to support them, that there's people who have gone before them that have experienced the same kind of things that they have, all the moving and the stress with their parents being deployed or things like that. It's important, I think, for kids to know that they have some help on the other side of things.
I did send home a survey for military kids. One, I wanted to see where they were born. That was the map. And I've been wanting to do that, so I sent it out a couple weeks ago so I had time to take pictures, create my map. But just to see how they felt their kids responded to the military, I asked for four words. And so on the "I'm a military kid" sheet, the bigger the words, the more it was brought up by the parents. So funny, smart, caring, were all really big ones.
So how JBB works with military students, we have a mentor program that we do, and it's staff members get paired up with kids that they kind of are starting to build a rapport with already, and then they do little check-ins each week. And so a lot of our military kids are involved in that program. And it's just really great for, especially the new kids that come in that are in the military, for them to have an extra person that's kind of a little cheerleader for them and helping them along and letting them know, like, hey, if you need anything, we're here for you. Our PTA also gets involved with our military students. They are participants in our Big B Mentor Program, and so they're paired up with some of our kids as well and helping them feel safe and welcomed at the school. I love our Veterans Day program. We invite parents, we invite people in the community. A lot of people get involved, and it's a lot of like our military and then retired military that come in. We, all the students will sing different songs from the different military branches, and it gets really emotional, like you have people standing up when they hear their song. And it's just, it's a lot of patriotic pride and excitement, so I love it. It's one of my favorite programs that we do. I think it's really important to connect military kids when they're in the school because you don't know how long they're going to be in the school, and you want to make sure that you've developed those connections with them right away, just in case they aren't here for more than two years, because you want them to have a home base and to feel safe. And developing that safety right away is really crucial to helping them succeed when they're in your building.
When we started our Military Social four years ago, we could fit parents and children in one classroom, and now we're using over half of the cafeteria to house them all and have the activities we have. So it's really grown, and it's pretty impressive to see. Everyone at JBB is so proud of being one of the first Purple Star Schools. As you heard in the recognition segment, Ms. Carpenter took part in special training, and she serves as our primary point of contact for our military families. Ms. Kimbrough was our point of contact for making sure all of our resources are on our website, that families have right at their fingertip access points to all military family resources. And every teacher, assistant administrator, custodian, cafeteria staff member, and bus driver are committed to building relationships with our students and to giving them the resources that they need to be successful. We hope tonight's spotlight gives you a good sense of how we accomplish that, and we would also like you to come visit us at any time and to see firsthand all the wonderful things that are happening at our school every day. It really is something to be proud of, and we are. In the meantime, our team is happy to answer any questions that you have for us.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I'm assuming that you have something to say because it's near and dear to your heart.
I love being at your school. That was wonderful. They were practicing for the program that day. But I taught in a military school, and I don't know if you know that. And so the transitions, the deployments, they have a huge impact upon families. So recognizing those stressors upon children is extremely important, and I applaud you for doing this. So thank you.
I had a question about, I noticed you have the William &amp; Mary ROTC candidates, and I just, they were all Army. So is it primarily the Army ROTC program at?
My husband used to be the professor of military science.
I was trying to make that connection.
He's since retired from the military, but we still have the connection with the cadets. So that's the connection I have and ask them. They've come a couple times to come help, and it just brings another connection to the kids and to our community.
That's great. I loved seeing the college students interacting with the elementary school kids.
That was really powerful, and some of our children that are very shy and introverted really got excited making connections with them. And the other really cool thing that Ms. Kimbrough did, that she's very modest about in doing that survey, is she purposefully made sure that all students had a connection sitting at the table. So whether they were born in Hawaii, or ever in Germany, or locally, they had a connection, something that they had a talking point could stem off of, which was really powerful for them.
Mr. Kelly?
Dr. Stam, thank you for coming tonight and bringing this, and congratulations on your award. I think really think Blatton is a great example for the rest of our division to emulate on how we treat our military kids. Because I think it's not only a great program for the military kids, but I think it's a great program for their parents as well to understand that their kids', you know, special needs are going to be met and acknowledged. And I think that's a great thing. And I think it's also good for the rest of the population too, or our student population, to interact with the military and get to know those folks, I think. So I really congratulate you and appreciate you coming forward and tell us about it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you very much for coming this evening and for your work. I think I'd like to echo Mr. Kelly's comment that you set an example for the rest of the division, but also for the state. Your designation really, I think, is a shining example of what we can do, and I hope you continue the work, and I look forward to hearing about the next things that you're doing to further this work.
And we will proudly display our resolution and our medallion.
You've got a medallion?
Coin at JBB. We're going to put it in a nice special case, so, and we get to have it for the next three years.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Congratulations. When we come visit, we'll come, yeah, check it out. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. Ms. Hummel?
Just heard from me, but you're going to hear from me again because this is the only important job the parliamentarian has. So this, this is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The board is interested in hearing all comments fully and request that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening and we appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines. Madam Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. I believe we have one speaker card. Ms. Ombi?
Kim Hunley.
And I didn't even need to say the word.
Good evening. Kim Hunley, proud president of the Teachers Association and very thankful. I love the spotlight because I count my blessings for working here and name them one by one. So as far as CIP and the budget, I know that my exec committee, we'd like to be included again with your retreat that you have, the budget retreat. We like to stay involved. The hardest unit I have to teach in kindergarten is the wants and needs unit, which comes up in December. It is so hard because we want a lot of things, but we need certain things. And so for you all, it's going to be a wants and needs assessment. I know as a parent, when you get those Christmas lists, I struggled. Okay, my son needs tennis shoes, so I have to get my daughter tennis shoes. If I'm going to spend this much on my son, I have to spend this much on my daughter. Try to make it all equitable and equal. And really, what I needed to do was, what does he need? And does he really need that, or does he want that? And so that's one thing you have to look at, and I know that's something that you will do. A lot of things are going to come. Again, the equity issue will be up. Again, you have to look at it as what's needed. And a lot of times, I remember my parents would do this. Okay, if you need that and you get that, then what are you willing to give up? Because if you get that, these are the things you might not receive, because that's a big ticket item. So those are just things to think about. We look forward to being with you throughout the budget process, and everybody wants everything, but let's focus on what really needs to elevate us to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I'm going, I have to scoot out. I hate to apologize, but the reading council, they're going over their book lists. There are a lot of books, oh, I want for my classroom, but there's only a few I probably need. But yes, the snacks, those are the blessing snacks. They just, if you just read that, it's just things we need to focus on, how thankful we really are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. All right. The next thing on the agenda is the New Horizons Presentation on Educational Services. Dr. Heron and Mr. Kelly, would you, Mr. Kelly serves as the chair of the New Horizons Board?
Vice Chair.
I'm sorry?
Vice Chair, but close.
Oh, vice chair. Oh, vice chair.
Yeah.
Sorry, I promoted you.
It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Casey Roberts, who is the new director of the New Horizons Regional Education Center. Mr. Casey Roberts started his career in public education in 2006 with Hampton City Schools, held a variety of positions, including that of classroom teacher, many administrative and leadership positions, high school assistant principal, and high school principal. Most recently, he served as the principal of Smithfield High School with Olive Weight from 2015 to 2018. Mr. Roberts completed his undergraduate studies at Virginia Tech.
The Hokies.
As a member of the Corps of Cadets, as I recall.
Correct.
And holds a Master of Education in Curriculum and Instruction with an emphasis in teacher leadership from Regent University. He also holds an Education Specialist Degree in Educational Leadership and Administration and is currently completing his Doctorate in Educational Administration and Policy Studies from the George Washington University. I want to thank my fellow board members for modifying the agenda because Mr. Casey is also a new parent.
Of a 12-week-old.
That's, and I think it's your second?
It's my second.
So he has a 12-week-old at home and needs to get there for mom's.
And I'm driving to Chesapeake, so.
So my pleasure to introduce Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Madam Chairwoman, Dr. Heron, and school board members, thank you so much for having me this evening and it's a pleasure to be here with you. I'm excited about the work that we're doing at New Horizons. And I will be giving you a brief overview of the work that we're doing in addition to the partnership we have with Williamsburg James City County. So our slogan for this year and for many years to come is boldly going beyond the horizon. So if you think of Star Trek to boldly go, that is something that we are doing at New Horizons. At New Horizons, we like to illuminate minds, ignite passions, and shape futures. And our mission is to train and educate a world-class workforce with our career and technical education programs. We also want to train and educate future scientists and mathematicians with our Governor's School for Science and Technology, and also provide effective therapeutic and vocational treatment for students and youth with disabilities with our Center for Autism and Newport Academy. So we have a regional footprint at New Horizons. We are owned and operated by the six peninsula school divisions, Hampton, Newport News, York County, Gloucester, Warrensburg, James City County, York County, Newport News. We were established in 1965 as the Virginia Peninsula Vocational Technical Education Center, so we've been around for over 50 years. We are the largest and oldest regional program in the Commonwealth of Virginia. There are nine other regional programs and we hold the largest and oldest title. We're multi-campus. We have five campuses currently. We have a Butler Farm campus, which houses our career and technical education, and Governor's School for Science and Technology in Hampton. Woodside Lane Campus holds two buildings, one for career and technical education and one for the Center of Autism and Newport Academy, the nine through 12 programs. We have a wing at Yorktown Middle School that houses our six through eight Center of Autism program, and a wing in Kill Creek Elementary Newport News that houses our K-5 Center for Autism program. We have over 300 employees, full and part-time, and our budget exceeds $19 million. And we serve annually 1,500 students across the peninsula and 1,200 adults per year. So New Horizons is more than just career and technical education. If you look up on the screen, we are New Horizons. We have eight different divisions that fall under the umbrella of New Horizons. We have career and tech, we have the Governor's School, we have the Center for Apprenticeship and Adult Training, the Youth Workforce, a family counseling center out of the College of William &amp; Mary, the Advanced Technical Careers Academy, Newport Academy, and Center for Autism. So a lot of the community understanding of New Horizons is that we provide a lot of career and technical education, but we go well beyond that in different service areas. So currently, we serve 1,044 students in our career and technical education programs from the six school divisions. We serve 23 high schools that feed into our career and technical education programs. We offer 25 career and tech course offerings, and we have an 87% pass rate when it comes to national credentialing for those students going through our programs. 81% of second, first-year students come back for a second-year study, and most of our courses are one-year studies. So students will come in, take electrical for one year, come back, and possibly take HVAC. So they're leaving with dual credits and dual credentialing when they leave and graduate from their home school. We also have the Advanced Technical Careers Academy, which is a transition to employment program and is a public partner, public-private partnership with 40 different companies in our area that are offering jobs to students before they leave high school. Here's our five-year plan. We started this five-year plan in 2015. We are currently in year four of the five-year plan, 2018, 2019. And many of the items in this five-year plan, we have accomplished already. There's a lot of work still to be done, but we are making headway with our five-year plan to make career and technical education a viable option for all students across the peninsula. So here's our course offerings at both campuses, Butler Farm and Woodside Lane. Most of our construction technology courses are located at the Woodside Lane, which is located in Newport News. But we offer everything from auto tech to veterinary science to fire science, cosmetology, Cisco networking, cybersecurity. We run the gambit of CT offerings. And we're looking to add more because a lot of our students are looking at those options as possible career opportunities when they leave high school. Our Advanced Technical Careers Academy, the Good Life Solution, is the partnership we have with 40 different companies where they have come in and is an employer-driven academy where 140 students across the peninsula are trained for employability and they are looking for specific jobs in automotive construction and manufacturing. We have a signature signing day. Most high schools have signing days for students that get full rides to colleges for athletics or academics. We hold a signing day similar to that event for students that are accepting contracts from companies such as LeBeire or Newport New Shipbuilding, Jordan, or Continental. So these students are receiving salaries in excess of $40,000, $50,000 straight out of high school with no debt. And we're not saying no to college for these students. We're saying, these students are saying, we'd rather go to work and allow these companies to pay for their college education. So this is a huge viable source for all, opportunity for all students. Our Governor and, our Governor's School for Science and Technology currently serves 176 students and we are the state-gifted high school program on the peninsula. We offer three research strands, and one in engineering, biological sciences, computational sciences. And through these three strands, students can choose an assortment of coursework that is also dual-enrolled. Students leave on average from the Governor's School for Science and Technology with 20 to 40 dual-enrolled credits from Thomas Nelson. So they can walk in to any of the top-tier universities with those credit hours and be ahead of their peers. And most of these students go to the top-tier universities, the Virginia Techs, the UVAs, the MITs, Harvard, Yale, Stanford. Those are the top-tier students that are going to those, from this program. Our Center for Autism serves 134 students from across the peninsula. And these students specifically have been diagnosed with autism or autistic disability. The program of the Center for Autism and Newport Academy is to provide students with the skills needed to return to their school, their home school. It's not the goal of this program to keep them at this program, but to give them the skills necessary to be successful at their home school. Students are engaged in workplace placement programs with the U.S. Navy and other local sponsors. And if you see from this photo here, one of those students received a commander's coin from the Commander of Defense Logistics Agency for his work he was doing at the commissary from Rear Admiral Harris, I believe. So our students are getting awards from top-tier people in our community and that's powerful. Newport Academy serves 95 students from across the peninsula and specifically serves students with emotional disabilities and intellectually disabilities. Again, the goal is to provide skills and training to those students so they can return to their home schools. In those pictures located on the screen, they recently held a Scholastic Book Fair and the students raised enough money to purchase interest books for the media center. It was a very exciting time. The students are very excited about their book fair and these are the powerful things that are happening at Newport Academy. So I'm going to give you a quick overview of our partnership specifically dealing with Williamsburg James City County. So currently, right now, we are serving 92 of your high school students in an assortment of career clusters at New Horizons with career and tech. The largest career cluster that your students like to attend is construction technology. And those courses are located at the Woodside Lane Campus in Newport News. We also have students that are also in engineering technology, automotive, information technology, public service, health sciences. Here's a success story from one of your students from Jamestown High School, Mason Colda. He is, was in the program for HVAC, which is located at the Woodside Lane Campus. He learned, he earned those certifications while he was at New Horizons and he was one of the first graduates of the ATC Academy. He was offered full-time employment with Newport New Shipbuilding before he graduated. And that's his picture right there, receiving a hat and the contract from one of the directors at Newport New Shipbuilding. Another success story is Thomas Ludwig from Jamestown High School. He was in our fire science program. He was a recipient of an honorarium of $1,000. He earned certifications for fire science and is currently enrolled at Thomas Nelson, finishing up his EMT certification. And currently, he is applying, he has applied and is in the interview process for Jamestown County Fire Department. For Governor's School for Science and Technology, we serve 29 students from Williamsburg James City County this year. And you can see that it's pretty much an even spread between computational science, engineering, and biological sciences. So you are sending a large cohort to our programs, which is very promising. A success story, most recently, November 9th through 10th, three Williamsburg James City County out of a group of five competed in the Harvard MIT Mathematics Tournament. And this is an international tournament where you have math teams from around the world that are competing for mathematic genius competition. They placed 70 out of 200 teams. So I don't, that is huge. And we have very, very intelligent students across the board in all of our programs, but this is definitely one that I wanted to highlight. Wesley Whitehurst is from War Hill High School. He participated in the research mentorship aspect. So as students matriculate through the program of studying in the Governor's School for Science and Technology and the three strands, they also have a research mentorship component. So these students are coupled with scientists at local universities, Jefferson Lab, that are doing live research, and they conduct research with those scientists. So this is one of your own. He conducted research with an associate professor from the College of William &amp; Mary and he's actually published and will be presenting his, co-authoring his research with this professor in Colorado. He already presented it in July. And I cannot pronounce all those words under his title, the title of his study. However, this is huge to have, to be published with a scientist before you get your high school diploma. That's powerful. For the Center of Autism, we currently serve eight students. At Newport Academy, we currently serve six this year, but as you can see, you can see the five-year spread that we are getting kids to go back to their home schools to be successful there. And between the intellectually disabled program, you have three students, and three students in the EDID program, so it's an even split right now. So what's on the horizon for New Horizons? We are undergoing a rebranding of our story. We are New Horizons and we really want to get out into the community to put New Horizons on the map and to let parents and students know that this is a viable option for all students. We want to not discourage students from going to college per se, but to say that this is also a viable option if you are interested in career and tech. We also have expanded career and technical course offerings. We're going to be offering plumbing and pipe fitting starting next year. And we're offering a two-year Cisco Academy. Currently, our Cisco Academy is one year, so students can receive the Cisco Academy Technician Certification with a second year. They can also get the certification for the analyst level, so it'll be Level 2 Cisco. We're also going to be holding community days where we're going to be inviting you and other school boards to come to New Horizons to actually see the work that we do, not just hear it from me and see pictures, but actually experience it with students in the spring. So be on the lookout for your invitations. We would love to have you. We're also having school division days where we're going to be inviting the division leadership and the building leadership principals and school counselors to come shadow students and to experience the career and technical education learning that's going on there, to better able to recruit students from high school to say this is a viable option that we wanted to put in front of you. So boldly going beyond the horizons, we are a dynamic and diverse organization that's committed to illuminating minds, igniting passions, and shaping futures for all students. We are making a global impact with graduates who are prepared and motivated for life, college, and the 21st workforce, turning for a century workforce. And we are pushing the limits of learning, experience, and self-discovery. New Horizons is also opening doors to unlimited opportunities, as you can tell from our students that are receiving contracts from those big companies that need our students to fill those positions. And we want students to look at New Horizons as a viable option and to think, start your future early at New Horizons. That concludes my presentation. I kind of zipped right through it. There's obviously more to New Horizons, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Kelly?
So Madam Chair, I was privileged to sit on the interview process for Mr. Roberts. And I hope you all see what I see, which was his excitement, his energy, and his visions for New Horizons. And I look forward to working with him as we go forward to take it to new heights.
Dr. Heron, before I toss it to school board members, as a superintendent member of that committee, do you have anything to add about?
We work very closely with Mr. Roberts and enjoy meeting with him before every board meeting. And he's really come out and sat down with a group of our staff to really start to create the vision for the future. We really appreciate being involved in that conversation with you, Mr. Roberts, and look forward to working with you more this year.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Dr. Heron?
Mrs. Young?
Yes. Hi. I love what New Horizons does for kids. And, but I have a question. It's not about the kids so much. The Center for Apprenticeship and Adult Training, can you expound a little bit about what that center does? Because we do have adults that probably could benefit from that.
Absolutely. So the Center for Adult Training and Apprenticeships is the adult component for New Horizons. We provide training and VOTEC education to get certified to the journeyman level when it comes to HVAC or electrical. And we serve over 1,200 adult learners. And we have employers that send their employees to the center to get certified. So they work during the day, they come to us at night to get certified. So they're working to get certified. And then once they become certified, they gain more salary benefits through the company. So it is a partnership with employers to train their employees.
Just one more question. And what are the age, what's the age span for that program?
It can range anywhere from 18 to upper 40s. We're talking about, we do have some students that are retooling from different industries. They want to get into plumbing, or HVAC, or electrical, and they're retooling and they come upwards to 40 years old plus. There may even be some 50-year-olds that are retooling. So it expands the gambit of the adult working age range.
Okay, thank you. But I know as a plumber, I was looking at that, I'm kind of excited about that because I recently had a lovely experience with a plumber. For three hours, we're at $500.
Correct.
So many of us are in the wrong profession. That's all I can say.
There are some master plumbers that are making more than, over $100,000 plus.
Yes.
Hummel?
We had a plumber out at our house for 15 minutes for $400. So you got a good deal.
I didn't.
So with the new portrait of a Virginia graduate and the new emphasis that we have on career tech, as a school board member, I want to see as many students as we can possibly, that are interested, take advantage of what New Horizons has to offer. And I know we have some, just kind of miles between us that create issues as far as just students having to get up really early in the morning and, so anyway. What is your vision in the next, or do you see, like in the next five to 10 years, if we really can do what we want, which is expand by three or four times what we're doing right now? Do you see that vision happening amongst, because I'm sure our school division isn't the only one thinking this. So do you see New Horizons just like growing and growing and growing or?
I see New Horizons growing as far as how many students we can serve, not necessarily the physical footprint of New Horizons, more buildings and that sort of thing, with the expansion of hybrid courses, online courses. We're really, we're really partnering with corporations that are interested in engaging in that type of dialogue about having online courses with content dealing with career and tech that students can do from their home school and possibly do a work-study, but it's not every day. It could be once a week or once every two weeks. So in the future, I see, you know, not just expanding our physical footprint, but expanding the opportunities as far as hybrid courses, online courses for career and tech to get those credentials.
Thanks.
Yes, I have three questions, building on Ms. Hummel's comment.
Yes, I have three questions, building on Ms. Hummel's comments. So last year, didn't we flip the time of day that our students are able to participate in New Horizons from early morning to afternoon?
My understanding is that Williamsburg, James City County comes in PM, the PM session.
This year?
That's correct.
Correct. We are, some of our courses are one session of the day, and we're looking to expand them to PM as well, like Mechatronics. Mechatronics is offered through Thomas Nelson. They can get 22 dual-rolled credit hours, but it's only offered in the morning. Next year, we're expanding it to PM, so students on the northern end of the peninsula could come down to take Mechatronics at the Hampton campus.
And so, building on that, Gov. School didn't switch. That's still early in the morning if you want to participate in Gov. School. Is that correct?
I would have to check that for all of the Williamsburg, James City County students, but I believe it's AM.
Okay. And you may not be able to answer this question, but I was just kind of looking for a ballpark for the students who participate in Gov. School. On average, how many college credits do they exit with when they graduate?
Sometimes it ranges, it depends on what's their course of study, between 20 and 40 dual-rolled credit hours.
That's huge.
Correct.
That's huge. And then I had one other question. So this current year, you're serving 92 WJCC students. What is our maximum capacity? How many slots does WJCC have?
Each division doesn't have a certain amount of slots. They send applications, applications are screened, and then we accept students that have their criteria to, that meets the course criteria. Right now, we are at capacity. We have 1,062 seats, and we're at 1,044.
So if you could help me, as we go into the budget season, understand, so it's my understanding with the amount of money that we budget to go towards the regional partnership that funds New Horizons, we do get X amount of slots?
Well, it's based on the three-year average of your enrollment. So back to your enrollment, you can see the enrollment for career tech. So as you can see, the career in tech, your three-year average would be 18, 19, 17, 18, 16, 17. So an average of those three numbers would determine your tuition rate for Williamsburg, James City County. So the more students you send, your tuition goes up. The less students you send, your tuition goes down. That's just for career in tech. So there's different formulas for the different departments within New Horizons.
So what's the formula for Gov. School?
The Gov. School is based on total credit hours that students are receiving.
It's very complicated. Thank you.
But it works. It works.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Roberts, we're really grateful that you came up this evening to share your information with us, and I look forward to the invitation to come down and visit and have an opportunity to spend some time down there. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Safe travels home.
Thank you.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the October 16th and the November 13th meetings, financial report, monthly bills and payroll for October 2018, personnel actions as presented, revised policy EBV threat assessment teams, revised policy JEA school attendance, retire policy JHF, JHFA, student safety supervision of students, and retire policy JOAS, access, rather, to student records. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sersi, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda has been approved. The next item is award a contract for invitation for bid number 19-13530, Cooley Field Renovations. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we award a contract for invitation for bid number 1913530, Cooley Field Renovations to Homeland Contracting Corporation, the amount of $288,484.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions for staff or any updates from staff? Dr. Heron?
The bid information has been added to the agenda item, that you've got the award of the bid from that.
Any questions about the bid or the project in general?
So, thank you, Mr. Snipes. I appreciate you taking a hint there. I noticed in the tabulation for a bid, the low bid is relatively extremely low. Are we concerned about that?
No, we are not concerned about it. The, we, Homeland, county has used Homeland.
Okay. All right. I was just, I was just, sometimes nothing more expensive than the lowest bidder, so just concerned. Thank you.
Any else? All right, Ms. Sersi, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
That motion passes. The next is approve resolution R1918, codification of guidelines for discussion, consideration, and decision for additional school capacity and growth. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move we approve resolution R1918, codification of guidelines for discussion, consideration, and decision for additional school capacity and growth.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Before I toss this for discussion, I just wanted to mention a couple things. So this is a topic that came through the Liaison Committee, which includes all three jurisdictions, both localities and the school division, to talk about how to come to a common understanding of when it's appropriate for the school division to work with the localities to discuss building or somehow adding additional educational space, and what kind of points, milestones at which those discussions should happen. I want to be clear that this doesn't apply to today. Today, we are above those thresholds, and that's reflected in Dr. Heron's CIP recommendation to us, which is before us and will be discussed later on in this meeting. But rather to come to a common agreement for the future. And so with that, if this is adopted today, I then will forward it to the mayor of the city and the chair of the Board of Supervisors for their consideration and ask that they put it on their agenda for adoption as well. So with that, anyone have any comments or questions? I don't know. Dr. Heron, do you have anything to add?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, hearing none. Ms. Sersi?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2020, 2029 Capital Improvement Plan Discussion. Just a reminder, we're discussing this today, and then it'll be on the next agenda for discussion and then adoption. And so that, the plan is then for us to adopt in December and forward our request to the localities. This is still a relatively new timeline for us. We used to adopt the CIP at the same time that we adopted our operating budget, but because this allows the opportunity for the localities to build this into their budgets, we shifted to the fall or the latter part of the year to allow better planning for, with the localities and their capital budgets. So with that, Dr. Heron, do you have anything you'd like to start with?
Just to remind the board, we've just presented, Dr. Murphy presented some additional updated research on school size, and you have that in front of you this evening, just as a reference point. And that's really the only new information this evening. We also provided some questions following the last board meeting's discussion of the capital improvement plan.
Does anyone have anything they'd like to comment on or ask staff about with regard to this CIP proposal from Dr. Heron?
Just a quick question. Is there any ranking of this, of these items?
So if they're in, they're all ranked one? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. This is a point of reference, Madam Chair, as well. The Board of Supervisors have not approved the end-of-year spending plan, so those items still, those items that were CIP items in that end-of-year plan are still in the CIP at this moment in time.
So I have some questions, and these are questions, I think, that we've discussed before, but just for the purposes of, you know, maybe if someone's just tuned in for the first time. I actually have kind of four topics I'd like to talk about. One is the accuracy of Future Think's projections. Other is kind of the logic behind 85% and 90% capacity, and why those things, you know, are important, why we don't go to, you know, 100, 110% capacity for educational purposes. And then I'd also like to talk a little bit about, kind of remind the public about the thinking behind the recommendation for a new elementary, and then also high school space, because those are the big-ticket items. So if I could start with the accuracy of Future Think, and if we could just talk about that, just, you don't have to bring up, you know, specific percentages, but it's been, you could just affirm that historically, it's been very close. If you could do that from the microphone, Ms. Barnes. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. For the last eight years, it's been within 1%, the low projection.
Of the low projections.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. And then, so just in terms of the community understanding, you know, where we are in terms of our elementary and high school buildings, across the elementary schools and across the high schools, being at the capacity that they are, could you talk a little bit about the need, Dr. Heron, to have, why you don't want to be exactly 100% full or 110% full? Why 85% is really ideal at the high school level, for instance? Could you talk about that, please?
Yes, I believe Dr. Worley is ready to make a few comments on that tonight, because obviously, at elementary school, students do come in classrooms of about 25 students or 20 to 25, and they remain in the same classroom all day. But the high school is very, very different when it comes to the types of programs that we have to offer with regard to choice. Dr. Worley, do you want to make a few comments on that, please?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Dr. Heron and Madam Chair, members of the board. For high school, obviously, as Dr. Heron was saying, each class doesn't come necessarily in a group of 20 to 25 in each room. We have lots of different programs in our high schools, lots of different initiatives. We have some class sizes that are larger for programs, especially within the music, arts, theater. We also have our innovative spaces, which we are having to make adjustments the past couple of years in our high schools to make space for the creativity, for the collaboration, for the students working in groups, building things and creating their presentations. And we just can't predict also, pardon me, for each classroom, what size they will, that it will be based upon what the course is. A lot of times, the students, our courses are changed each year based upon a course request, but obviously, when we want to spread out for teachers also to collaborate, but also spaces for students to work, they're not always compact. Right now, in most of the high schools, most of the rooms are being utilized every period of every day. Teachers do not have their own classroom, per se, to plan in. They have workspaces that they go to, department offices or collaborative workspaces, but they're, almost every classroom, most hours of the day are utilized, so it's not like we have an empty room anywhere. And we noticed that makes, the last six years as a high school principal, that often made master scheduling quite difficult when there was no room for flexibility in the schedule because there's not spaces available.
This kind of is a question that deals with our last meeting, when the, we had a public commentary about smaller, like for Lafayette, for example, where you have AP classes that don't make because they don't have the number of students. So you're talking about class sizes that I would, if we're not doing redistricting and we're trying to accommodate some of the student issues related to AP courses that don't make, that maybe they should make at a lower level, which would be taking up a classroom with less children or less students. It's another thing that we should be considering when we talk about capacity, because if we're talking about fairness for those college-bound, college-prep students, it's important for them to have access. And so maybe the school class sizes aren't going to be at 15 to 35 students in a class to make our high schools equitable. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out as something that we should be considering when we're talking about capacity and classroom sizes.
Dr. Worley, I just have a question. Last year, we received information, we did a period-by-period study of classroom utilization, and I thought I remembered that at Lafayette, there were classrooms that were not being utilized?
I don't have that information right in front of me. I could get that. I'm sure, I know from my recollection, specifically with Jamestown, we had a few rooms that were not utilized, but I do not know from the top of my hand, each high school, what that report was. But I know that across the board, as we worked on our master schedules, it was difficult to, sometimes the space impacted the schedule, not just even the request. We'd have a teacher available, but not a space for the teacher. So I can definitely give that information for you.
I mean, because we're asking the community to put money into expansion, and I think it would be important to find out just what we're really talking about when it comes to those classrooms. If all the classrooms, like you said, are being utilized, and I do understand the difficulty of master schedules, but it, I think I would like that, if we could somehow check it out, at least Lafayette, for sure, because I do, it did seem to me that War Hill and Jamestown were pretty full. But if you could find some time to just check into Lafayette for me, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to thank the staff for all the hard work, diligent work, for presenting the CIP. And I think the struggle is real with wants and needs, and I think that as a division, we do a really good job of identifying our needs. And I know that we are a premier school division, and we are lucky that teachers from across the nation continue to want to come and teach in our schools, and families often who are transient or moving here, military families, choose to come to Williamsburg, James City County because of our schools. And I know our neighbor, York County, has approximately the same number of students that we do, and they have three additional buildings. So I don't think that our CIP is unrealistic by any stretch of the imagination. And so I just want to echo again and thank staff for all the hard work of pulling together this CIP and helping us understand it and understand the numbers, and helping the community understand that we truly have needs.
Yeah, I would like to echo Ms. Ombi's thanks of staff. This is a process that, you know, starts, it's a very long process, and it's comprehensive, and it's building year over year, and it's inclusive of community members and of our localities and of staff within the division. And it's informed by, you know, staff and building leadership and the facilities index, conditions index. I hope we're going to commission another one of those soon, because that's getting a little old. But, you know, I would like to talk a little bit about the new elementary and the high school additions. I support the CIP as it's currently presented. We need a new elementary school today. We are, we have, we have a trailer already at the elementary school level. We are seeking another. I think we are going to seek more ultimately before we open another elementary school. What's driving my thinking about elementary school, in addition to existing capacity, is keeping in mind that after the recession, we actually increased class size at the elementary school level, and we haven't been able yet to undo that. I don't think we did that, we took that decision as a division lightly, and I think we hoped that it would be temporary. And I think we hear from the Education Association and teachers all the time that class size matters. And so if we're able to ever go back to the way it was pre-recession, to that smaller classroom, there is no doubt we will need more. So any doubt with projections, currently, right now, we have more children in each classroom. And when we have the resources to alleviate that, we're going to absolutely need that space. So I support the new elementary school request wholeheartedly. The high school additions, particularly the, starting with War Hill, next year, asking for design and then funding the additions and the auxiliary gym. I think the parents have been clear that the auxiliary gym is needed at that school, and I hope that they take the message beyond us to the funding bodies as they, you know, continue to advocate that.
continue to advocate that. I think adding a couple hundred students at each building is cheaper than opening a new high school. I think the enrollment projections suggest that that is the more prudent way to move forward at this time, although I agree with Mr. Kelly, ultimately, additional high school will absolutely be needed. For now, I think additions are the way to go, and to start with War Hill because of its location and it's so closely located to a built environment and infrastructure, including transportation and the, and the community college, and to move the, some of the programs that are currently housed at Lafayette to, over to that school to allow those students who need a slightly different high school experience to take advantage of the nearby community college. So I just would like to applaud staff for both their, you know, thoughtful and prudent approach to, you know, to both additions, and in one case, it resulted in recommending a new school, and in another case, it actually recommended additions, and I think looking at it critically at each level should be applauded. So anyway, does anyone have anything to add to that?
The only thing I'd like to add to your comment about the elementary school, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I'm not sure if the design in fiscal year 20 isn't too early because we don't have a site that's been identified, and I think you'd kind of like to do the design around the site that you have. But your point is well-taken about increasing, increasing class sizes. But the other thing, other factor to consider there is we also took away teacher assistance at the, at the early level, early levels, and that, and that has also had an effect. So not only have we added more students to the elementary classrooms, we've also taken away the teacher assistant, which is kind of the double whammy. So I certainly support the elementary school and the expansions as we, as we talked about last week, so.
I also support the elementary school addition, you know, to build another elementary school. I also support the War Hill going first. I would like us to perhaps look next year or the following year at our attendance numbers, and then I don't want to totally write off a redistricting at the high school level if it saves a lot of money and can balance our schools. So just want to put that out there. Anything else? Dr. Heron, is there anything that we left out or anything that you'd like to add?
I don't think so. Just following from Mrs. Hummel's comment, obviously, we're voting, when we bring this to the board to vote it, they vote just on the next year, and so there is an opportunity to look at the enrollment every single year and make adjustments as we feel are prudent and necessary.
Okay. If there's nothing else, that moves us to board member comments and requests. Mr. Kelly?
Just as we approach the end of the, end of this calendar year and students get ready for the, for that big break to just maintain their focus and, and stay safe in that break, so.
Mrs. Young?
I guess I'd just echo what Mr. Kelly said, because I'm, as we're going into the winter season, roads are going to be icy here. I'd sure like everyone to be safe.
Taylor?
It was a very encouraging evening, which I enjoyed, our recognitions of our students and the JBB spotlight and the presentation from New Horizons, talking about all the wonderful programming offered to our students.
Ms. Hummel?
I just wanted to remind everyone to come to the, the holiday parade in Williamsburg at nine o'clock on Saturday, and it's not going to rain.
Don't look at me like that.
That's it. Ms. Ombi?
I was very excited to hear about the text messaging. That's so cool. I am so excited. I can't wait to get my first text message.
What, that the school's going to be stopped because of snow?
And it's easy. It's easy. Like, I don't have to do anything. You're going to send me a text message, and then I just say yes. I want to be in that.
Thank the Communications Department.
I'll do it.
Since we last met, several of us attended, all of us, no, yeah, several of us, most of us, attended Virginia School Boards Association Annual Conference, which we're very lucky takes place in Williamsburg, which saves the division a lot of money, right? Because we get to just, we don't have to travel. And so, you know, I think we all learn a lot there, and very grateful for the professional development opportunities we have in this state and nationally for school boards, and not every, not everyone has that, so we're lucky. And I also just want to encourage citizens to please weigh in on the, the CIP. We had two public hearings, but we'll adopt next meeting, but then it goes through a process with the localities, so please, please keep commenting. You know, whether you support it or don't, it's important to hear what you have to think, and your comments always encourage us to ask better questions. So we appreciate that, and I would add the same thing for the operating budget that's coming up at the beginning of next year, and so stay tuned for that, and please engage in that, because together, we collectively make better decisions with citizen input. So we appreciate that very much. Anything else? All right, that brings us to upcoming events. Tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. in room 309, the Policy Committee is meeting. Tomorrow afternoon at 3:30, the Student Advisory Committee meeting is at Lafayette High School Media Center. And then on the 29th, at 7:30 a.m., the School Liaison Committee is meeting at the room 309 in the Annex at the School Board and Central Office.
Quick correction to the Student Advisory. It's at 3:00.
It's at 3:00.
Not 3:30.
It's at 3:00.
Is it at 3:00?
Yes.
And SEAC has scheduled a December 12th meeting, which will be held in the Annex, building room 108. They typically don't hold a December meeting, but September and October were hurricaneed out, so they've only met once this year.
Thank you for adding that. All right, any other upcoming events? That will move to upcoming meetings. We have a joint meeting on December 6th in the Stryker Center here in room 127, and then on December 11th, we will have our only meeting in December. It starts at 6:00 p.m. No, it starts at 5:15, yes, in the Annex at School Board and Central Office. That's a closed session. And then the work session and action items will start at 6:30 in room 300 in the Annex. And then we will begin the new year for our organizational meeting on the 8th of January at 6:00 p.m., also in the Annex, followed by the organizational meeting and work session at 6:30. And because December is our, we only have one meeting, the action item that is on the agenda that I know of right now is the CIP, and Ms. Sersi did send me an email with the other items, but I didn't have a time to digest it, so stay tuned for what's on that agenda, but we know that the CIP will be on that. So is there anything else I'm missing, Ms. Sersi or Dr. Heron? It's, that's fine. Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.